This time I'll call the March 21st, 2022 York County Council meeting to order. At this time, I'll recognize the Honorable Joel Hamilton from District Seven, who will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for gathering us this evening to conduct the business of this county. In the midst of war and uncertainty, we are struck by the blessings you have bestowed on our community. Pray you will bless us with the wisdom to recognize and make use of those blessings, so that the coming generations will also enjoy your grace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the following individuals would come forward to be sworn into office: Thomas Bud Smith, zoning board of appeals, District Six; Elizabeth Bowers, Rock Hill, York County Visitors Bureau at Large; Dean Fayle, Catawba Regional Council of Governments at Large. And as you make your way to the front, I would like to say on behalf of the council that we appreciate your volunteer service. A lot of times, you will not get any thanks for what you're doing. We cannot conduct the business of the county without your help, and we very much appreciate your dedication and your willingness to serve. At this time, we are looking for legal to come swear you in.
Hey, bud.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're sitting right behind me. Yeah, I kept saying, "I need to tell him who I am." But then the game wasn't going well, so again, delicious.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified?
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state?
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of this office?
Which I've been appointed. Which I've been appointed.
And I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state?
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your service. We do not have any appearances on our agenda tonight. We move now to the public forum session. At this time, I will call the individuals who have signed up. When you make your way, if you would please give your name and your address. And when you start your comments, if you will pay attention to the screen that's up in front of you. After the two minutes is up, it will start blinking, which will signal that your time is closed. And I would much prefer that you look at that instead of me having to cut you off. That's not something I enjoy doing. Tony Smith.
How are y'all? First off, just want to say thank you. Let me rephrase that. First off, I want to give my name and address. Everybody forgets to do that when they come up here. Tony Smith, 4249 Share Road in Shaver, in South Carolina. I also serve on the zoning board of appeals. I know a few of you, some of you I have not met. But just wanted to go through this brand-new 600-page recode. I was on, I hit page 199 and had some major concerns. As far as section 155 dash point 453, that's the design standards for RSF 30, which I may still call for the next 10 years RC2. I had some, had some major concerns as far as the mobile homes. I didn't print it. I asked staff to give me a copy of it, and they were told that they couldn't print it either, because it was 600 pages. So I'm gonna use my phone here. But just a few things, this thing, it says in here is exterior siding. You know, I didn't really have a problem with that. But the, we have a section here that says color slash texture. Color and texture of exterior materials shall be compatible with the adjacent single-family structure. So pretty much, if I want a blue home, my neighbor across the street has to have a blue home. You know, I think that's more of an HBA kind of request, more than maybe our zoning code should be. Underpinning, no more vinyl underpinning. Roof structure, we don't have, it says we must be a 412 pitch roof. A lot of these mobile homes are not manufactured with a 412 pitch. A lot of them are three. But you go on to say that eve projection must be six inches to 30 inches. A lot of these mobile homes do not have. You'd be good to get four inches out of one. A lot of them don't have any. Minimum width, this is a big one. The minimum width of a manufactured home that is not part of a manufactured home park is 20 feet. So I think that we'd have just been better off to put no mobile homes on here instead of typing out this list of requirements. Because if we meet all these requirements, we will not allow mobile homes. And I know every one of your districts has mobile homes. Whether they fall into, you know, AGC or RUD, we're not, we're not having a focus on this. But a lot of these mobile home communities are zone RC2 or now RSF 30. And so I think we, we really need to back up and punt on this one. You know, I was talking about, just two minutes.
I've given it a little bit more time, because I don't have a lot of folks, if you want to give.
I apologize. The only thing I wanted to say was that the average cost of a stick-built 1,200-square-foot home in the town of York right now is about $300,000. And to be able to qualify for that loan, you've got to make around $50,000 a year with no other debt. And, you know, so what we're gonna end up with is all of our, if we, we don't allow mobile homes anymore. You know, our teachers and our first responders, stuff like that, are gonna be living out of county, trying to travel back and forth to work, so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Look at that again. Thank you for y'all's time.
I did give some extra time, because it looks as if we don't have any other folks. I will, and we assigned 30 minutes. These folks have scratched their names out, because it looks like they're here to speak on the public hearing, but I'll read their names just to make sure. Bucky Glover and Clint Shuford. If you intended to speak at the two minutes, then you're welcome to come up. If you'd rather wait till the public, okay, all right.
I was supposed to leave the public hearing too. I need more than that, I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That concludes our public forum. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to our first public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing and give third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and New Cycle LLC, formerly known as Project Donald, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? When you make your way forward, if you'll just please state your name and give your address.
My name is Bucky Glover. I live at 2262 Singleton Creek Road, Liberty Hills, South Carolina. Okay. I'm here to speak in favor. I'm thankful for the opportunity to come and talk to you about this incentive package. I'm here to speak in favor of the package. I am the company's CPA, have been involved with the owners for some 25 years. And we're grateful to have this performance-based incentive package. Provided we perform as we have asked, we will earn these incentives. And the incentives are important, A, in the selection of where we put this particular facility. We have some sites in another South Carolina county and some in North Carolina, but it seems that Rock Hill, York County is the best place for us to be. We're gonna make a significant investment in high-tech recycling equipment. We'll be creating jobs. Total investment will probably be initially somewhere around $18 million. And it will help clean the environment, in that we will be removing junk cars, old dilapidated white goods, taking them out of the environment, turn them into usable metals to be used in the recycling of metals in various smelting operations and iron operations. We appreciate your consideration of this package, and we're here to speak in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Glover, for your investment in York County. We move now to old business rezoning action. Consider second reading, case number 21-22, tax map number 6530000010, to rezone from OI to GC, three and a half acres in District One. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve?
Approve. Yep.
Motion to approve in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action.
One question on that, if I could. I just called, there is a recommendation from planning commission for a condition.
I believe the conditions were included in the previous motion, so it carries forward. Mr. Kendry, is that right?
I don't recall the status of the condition. It's something from planning that we're sat.
Yeah, I don't recall.
Do we have anyone from planning to comment on that?
No, ma'am. I'll get an answer to that and get back with you.
Do we have a motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider in a second. Would you like your motion to include the conditions that have been expressed by staff?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes with the conditions. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 22-01, tax map number 4360000013, apportion the zoning request to rezone from AGC to RUD, one acre in District Five.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 22-02, tax map number 5430000052, zoning request to rezone from ID to RUD, 7.46 acres in District Six.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We do not have any new business. We move now to committee and other reports. Planning and zoning committee, Chairwoman Allison Love.
The planning and zoning committee met on March the 15th, and Councilman Roddy and Councilman Goffey were present. We started just kind of an open discussion about recode. We didn't have a specific item on our agenda. We wanted to kind of get a feel for what council members were looking to maybe up, not upgrade necessarily, but looking to change. And just after some brief review, we had some of the builders there who were helping us with the, what we were calling the low-impact development. It's actually the term, the correct term for that, we learned, is low-density development. And so we are moving forward with some ideas staff will come back to us on. And we will be meeting again. So if anybody going forward also will let me know what those items are that need to be on the agenda. One of the questions at the last meeting, Councilman Aldette had asked about commercial parking. And so we got that, we got that cleared up and addressed. So we're gonna continue to go through the recode, just like things that Mr. Smith brought up tonight, and fix those things as they came up. We gave us time to do that, and so we're diligently, we may have a meeting a week, but we're gonna, we're gonna get it as good as we can over the next few months.
Thank you, Ms. Love. We'll make sure to get that list to you. Finance and operations committee meeting, Chairman Robert Winkler.
Thank you. Finance and operations met this afternoon or this evening at 5:15. Myself, Councilmember Joel Hamilton, and Councilmember Allison Love were present. And we took up applications for service. We recommended the reappointment of Tracy Plunkett for a second term on the council on aging. We recommend the appointment of Mike Dorelia for the District Five vacant seat for York County Planning Commission. On the York County Culture and Heritage Commission, we recommended George Fendell for a first term in District Seven, and Eddie Lee for a first term in the vacant ex officio seat. York County Natural Gas Board, the recommendation was for Dennis Getter, for a reappointment of Dennis Getter for a second term. And Bethesda Fire Tax District, the recommendation was for the appointment of Paul Wise for a first term to fill a vacant seat on that board. And then we got an update on finance. And our vacancies are trending ever higher, it seems. So it's something we're having to work on, because, but it's something that doesn't seem to be just York County that's having that issue. It seems like it's across the board, vacancies are, you know, it's hard to find people in full seats right now. But other than that, our revenue is on budget, everything's going good. We're just having trouble finding people for the jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. Councilmember Newt Nodden to comments.
Just a T left.
I already put there.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Roddy.
While I get chosen to lead this segment off, but I did want to touch on what Tony Smith mentioned, and I want to reiterate, this new code is fairly new. We're definitely gonna go through it. And we like to hear from people who kind of don't understand, or things are not sitting well. We do want to try to massage certain things if we can, if at all possible. And to reiterate what Allison said about our committee meeting, yes, we were discussing partly and in part about numbers of trees associated with certain acreage and how that part is to perform. And we're definitely massaging that. Obviously, and over the weekend, this is the Newt Nodden to comment. Over the weekend, I was approached by a young lady whose daughter was killed by gun violence a couple of years ago. And she wanted me to start having some discussion with council and staff about dedicating trees that's on county property to individuals or citizens whose families have been victimized by gun violence. And so over the weekend, I had this idea that on county property, where we have trees planted, we can always do something in front of trees that, not that particular tree for that individual, but name some individuals who have lost family members to gun violence on county property. I think that would be an easier route to recognize that versus trying to buy, we're not gonna buy property to make this kind of a memorial, but anywhere on county property, if we could start dedicating some trees in memory of certain people who were tragically killed in the York County community due to gun violence. And I thought that was a good, a good idea, and so I did want to kind of bring it and throw it out. And I know each of us now have some discretionary funds that we can do certain things in our district. And I just wanted to put that out to the county, I mean, the rest of the council, that, you know, every day, somebody's losing their life to gun violence in this community and all across this country. And I think it is incumbent upon us to, when we can, at least recognize those families and family members who have been victimized in our community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Anybody else? Mr. Winkler?
I'll just remind everyone out there, the best way to be involved in your community and in your neighborhood is, if you want to do something about it, is to do what we've all done, and run for county council or run for a local elected position. And that timeframe is still open for anybody who wants to file, to be able to file for about one more week or so, I believe. The 30th, I think, is when it closes. So I know there's a few of us up here that won't be up here, or a couple of us up here, at least maybe three of us that won't be up here next year. And so, you know, it's always, you know, it's more than people realize. But, you know, it's a good thing to do, and it's a way to show your support for the community. And so we hear a lot of times from people about they want to make things better, so this is the way to do it.
Anyone else? Mr. Aldette?
Yes, real quick, I want to piggyback off of Councilwoman Love's comment around parking spaces in regards to businesses, which is, which was a good conversation I had with Jonathan. And basically, what's gonna occur is that if you do have a business you're wanting to put in, prior to this change, if a business needed to change the number of parking spots, they had to get a variance change and a variance request in and have that variance approved. Now, there's a process, you can submit the request into planning, and they will do it through planning to put that request in as a special exception. So it's gonna make the process much easier for people that want to add spots or lower the number of spots. So again, that's good for our businesses in the area. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, is that we are working with the Council of Aging to work to get what they call access transportation up into TDK Fort Mill and Lake Wiley area. It's a non-demand service that is for elderly and disabled. Other parts of York County currently do have that, but we don't. And it's something that is very important to our elderly and disabled. So again, it's being worked on, more to come, but I wanted to share that with everyone. So, thank you.
Mr. Goffey?
Yep, I just want to remind or essentially call on anyone in the building community as we're going through this recode, to really look at these rules. You know, over the next five months that we have to review this recode, we need to make sure that, you know, there's not anything coming out of left field that anyone is shocked over. So I want everyone to really look at that. Let us know if there is an issue, so that way we can have that discussion and see if it is something that can be remedied. I know, being a contractor myself, one of the things I run into and I can't stand is whenever there's some rule that I was unaware of. So I don't want anyone to get surprised six months down the road, and all of a sudden they start complaining about something. This, now is the time to really look at this and go through it.
Thank you, Mr. Goffey. Having concluded that, we move to, there are no citizen concerns. We have a motion for executive session.
We do. I move that we go into executive session to receive legal advice relating to a contractual matter regarding GT Real Estate Holdings, also for the receipt of the legal advice relating to Morningstar, for the receipt of legal advice relating to another contractual matter regarding municipal inmate agreements, and also for additional legal advice relating to Blue Granite.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move into executive session as soon as the gallery is cleared. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We have a motion. First of all, I move to suspend our rules.
For purposes of?
For purposes of following motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I will say that I I don't believe that this is the way the county should do business. I believe the motion is out of order. I believe that it is not on the agenda. Consideration of a resolution is not on the agenda. It has not been submitted in accordance with Rule 30.11(c). It was not gone through the process under 3011h. I have an issue with public transparency on this, and so I cannot support suspending the rules in this case. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those saying no? No.
No.
Motion passes, five to two. Do we have any other motions?
We do. Move to approve a resolution committing York County to enter into amend or take any actions necessary to execute and deliver a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement with GT Real Estate Holdings LLC, GTRE, its affiliates, related entities, and sponsor affiliates, pursuant to which York County shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, two, to provide for special source revenue or infrastructure improvement credits, three, to provide specific assurances related to economic development incentives and pertinent agreements approved for the project, four, and other matters relating thereto, as we discussed thoroughly in executive session.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
I just want to say, you know, over the last two weeks, we've, this came upon us real quick. It put staff probably in one of the most challenging positions to work on this, to bring back us something that at least offers or continues to offer York County support for the Carolina Panthers and their practice facility, their headquarters, and any future developments they have committed to over the last several years. As our chairman noted, this is not the normal course of action. But I think that the times we're in, the situation that we're up against, calls for us to suspend the rules and do what we need to do to ensure the taxpayers of York County that we still have their best interests at heart. And I think some of the things that are gonna go into this newly restructured financial package offer, it's gonna be better for our taxpayers in the long run. This deal actually is, is better. It gets us back to a point where we're gonna see revenue on the bottom line a lot faster if, in fact, this goes through at this 11th hour. So having said that, I'm proud to offer second. I'm proud to offer my support for this resolution. And it's just a signal and outreach to Tepper Sports and Entertainment, the Carolina Panthers, that we are serious about supporting what we set out to do a little over two years ago. I think the support for this signifies our intent and our willingness to continue to work and use our best effort and our professionalism to move the ball forward, to get this project back up and running, to get hundreds, and I mean hundreds, of workers back on site. And hopefully, we're still able to meet that 2023 deadline when the Panthers are set to open their training camp for the 2023 season.
Yeah, if I can go ahead and go. This deal before us, you know, myself and Councilman Aldette, were neither one involved in the original Panther deal. If I could ask Kevin Madden, our CFO, which I think everyone agreed always has the best interest of our taxpayers and mine, have, has the Carolina Panthers, have they ever been dishonest with you at all or misled you in any way?
No, the Carolina Panthers have always been very professional and very honest.
Okay. Is, under this resolution or proposal, is there any borrowing by any government entity at all?
No, sir. This is straight SSRCs. No government entity would be obligated to borrow funds.
Okay. And do you like this structure better than what was, what is currently in place?
I do. I do prefer straight SSRCs over governments borrowing in situations like this. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Do have a quick question. Kevin, back to you real quick on this. Just for my points of clarity, and I know we talked through this a few times earlier, but based on what we're seeing in the resolution, the practice facility, headquarters, we wouldn't see any tax revenue for 30 years off of that, based on what we're seeing in this resolution, correct?
The framework of this resolution, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, just want to get clarity. Thank you.
Mr. Winkler?
I'll just say, I voted for the alteration to our normal procedures for this to be able to get out and get voted on and discussed in public instead of all the discussion that was going on behind closed doors. I will not be voting for the resolution for one main reason. The three times I ran for county council in the past, one thing I always told everyone when I spoke to them and was I promised them that I would not vote for anything that I had not seen ahead of time and read and understood. And this resolution was not on the agenda for tonight. It was not in an email to us. I did not see it until executive session tonight. And to keep my word, I cannot vote for this, because I have promised the voters who voted for me that I would not do that. Now, I do hope that at some point in the future, there is an agreement that is worked out and comes before us that is better than what's currently in our agreement now. And that I'll get that agreement on our Thursday night email when we get our packet, and I have time to read it and maybe support it at that time. But I will not be supporting the resolution tonight, because I'm gonna fulfill my word to my voters and not vote for something that I have not had time to read and understand.
Ms. Love, I think it's very important that we keep pounding on behalf of the Carolina Panthers and one of the largest economic development booms, whether it's five, 10, 15, 20, or 30 years from now for York County and our residents. This is very important. I supported it in the beginning.
I supported it in the beginning, and I think this is a good faith effort. And my goal is to be able to work with the city of Rock Hill and the state of South Carolina and the Carolina Panthers, our Economic Development Department, and, and you, my fellow councilmembers, to, to bring this to fruition and put those people back to work out there, and, and let's move forward and cross that goal line.
Mr. Hamilton?
So, I share the, the concerns and discomfort that were voiced with, you know, some of the speed of process with this resolution. However, I also have great concerns for the hundreds of men and women who have worked tirelessly day after day on this site to get this project up and whose jobs are currently at risk and potentially not coming back. Also have great concern for the real risk of losing what Ms. Love correctly referred to as the biggest economic development project in our county's history that we've seen and likely will ever see. Also have great concern with losing a fantastic community partner that will benefit the citizens of this community for generations to come. And I have great concerns about losing future tax revenue in the millions of dollars that is greater than, I, I don't even know how many homes it takes to generate that, that tax income that will offset the burden and the cost to serve on the taxpayers living in this community. This agreement allows us to move forward with what is simply a generational project that our children and grandchildren will see the benefit of. And I've been consistent in that statement since the inception of this project years ago, that this isn't for us. This is for the people that are going to come after us. And hopefully, we have the strength and foresight to provide that for them. You know, the, the, the speed of process is the first time that, you know, we've had to engage in this speed of process since I've been on council. And it's also the first time that we've been faced with a situation like this since I've been on council. The situation that we're faced with is, the bottom line is, we're, we're at risk of losing this right away. We're, we're, we're operating on a timeline that simply is not our choosing. And despite our unhappiness with that timeline, we are thrilled to have an opportunity to save this project and bring the site back online and get the Panthers back into this community as a willing and positive community partner. And I look forward to continuing discussions to be able to make sure that happens. As, as Councilman Goffey and, and Kevin Madden discussed, the bottom line is, this project actually is better in the long term for our taxpayers. It does not require anyone to write a check to the Panthers. We're talking about growth paying for growth and infrastructure being, being paid for with tax revenue from the site. And that requires providing that tax revenue back into the site in order to complete the, the very high cost of the public assets that will be added to the site. And I think that's important to remember, that we're not talking about giving money away. We're talking about an investment into public assets that will be enjoyed and will connect to an interchange on seventy-seven that will bring economic impact not just to this particular project, but to people in and around the city of Rock Hill who have greater access to that corridor. The ripple effects of this are vast, far and wide, and, and far exceed what we can even imagine. But the one outcome that we know we don't want is to lose the ability to see any of that, and that's what's really at risk.
I cannot support this tonight, mostly because of public transparency concerns that I have about this and not following process. I did not put this on the agenda as a resolution. The resolution does not appear anywhere on the agenda. Although I did not vote for the initial incentives, I do want this project to be successful and move forward without interruptions. However, I refuse to do that when I believe our process has not been followed, and it comes at additional expense that, that taxpayers weren't given an opportunity to speak out against. I think it does commit, it results in committing an additional fifty-seven million in incentives without a specific tie to any guarantee or additional consideration. I do hope that that comes to fruition as this continues to be negotiated. But I believe that we've ignored our process, and for that reason, I can't support it. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes four to three.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.